Good evening, my name is Aaron Tuckfield. I'm the chairperson of the zoning board of appeals and at 7:00 on November the 4th, I am calling this regularly scheduled meeting.
Six thirty?
Uh, did I say 7:30?
Six seven.
Six seven, 6:30, pardon me. Some habits apparently die hard. Um, order being called, I'm going to have everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Our next item is the roll call. Our secretary is not with us this evening, so I think I'm going to call a roll call this evening. And with that, Mr. Piper.
Here.
Mr. DeCosta.
Here.
Ms. Posey.
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield is present and Ms. Lawson is absent. I don't believe we have to excuse her, but she did give sufficient, uh, she did give sufficient notice and she is not going to be here this evening. Uh, that being said, we're going to move on to item four, which is addressing any conflicts of interest at this time. I'm going to call the roll and if you have any conflicts on any of the items tonight, please indicate by saying yes, and if you have no conflicts, please indicate by saying no.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, before you proceed, can I make a motion to exclude Ms. Lawson from any roll call votes since?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Piper. Uh, motion by Mr. Piper to exclude Member Lawson from any roll call votes, is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Posey, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Piper. Uh, that will take us back to the conflict of interest, uh, roll call again. If any members have a conflict on any items this evening, please signify by saying yes. If you do not, please signify by saying no. And I will call the roll. Mr. DeCosta.
No.
Ms. Posey.
No.
Mr. Tuckfield says no, Mr. Piper.
No.
All members having voted no, uh, we will be on all the items tonight and that moves us on to the approval of the agenda. Is there any motions on tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Ms. Posey, is there support?
I'll second.
Uh, support by Mr. DeCosta, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. We move on to the approval of the previous meeting minutes. Uh, just a note on this, I will abstain from voting as I was not at the previous minute, uh, meeting, um, but if any members, tripping over my mouth tonight. If any members have any comments or motions, please do so at this time.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented.
Motion by Ms. Posey, is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Mr. Piper. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. And I am, for the record, abstaining as I mentioned earlier. Uh, that moves us on to old business. Item 7A is a variance request from the zoning ordinance, section 10.0704.A, point 2, point D, and this would be for permanent parcel 0804-300030. Mr. Box, could you bring us up to speed on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board. Uh, yes, so this item was on the agenda last time and was tabled, uh, for, uh, for this meeting. Uh, the motion was to table it until this meeting, although I do not see the petitioner in the audience this evening, so I don't know if you wish to, I guess I'll stop there and see if you wish to still discuss this item tonight, or do you want to table it?
Did you have any indication from the petitioner that he was going to be here or not be here?
No indication one way or the other, no.
I have no history with this item. I was not here the, the last meeting. While I did watch, I'd hesitate to comment on it. I guess what's the feeling of the board, tabling versus hearing tonight?
Well, Mr. Chairman, part of the discussion last, um, meeting was that, um, the township is in the process right now of doing an ordinance review, um, because, uh, some of our ordinances are outdated and Josh can, um, add to that information, but I know we did, um, hire, um, Carl Wortlet to do a review of all, all our ordinances. Um, can you give us an update on that?
Sure, so we did have, um, a zoning audit completed, um, and they did turn in a document that was, you know, 12, 15 pages long or so, pointing out places where there's conflicts, items that need to be addressed. They did not point to this ordinance in particular, uh, but they did mention a number of items where, uh, the state is a little bit, uh, we are a little bit more restrictive than what the state would allow, uh, and in those instances, they are recommending that we revise our ordinance to align with the state. And in this situation, uh, the, the state allows four to one where the township allows three to one on lot, uh, width versus depth.
With that being, being said, Mr. Chairman, um, and the petitioner's not here, um, I'll make a motion to table this item until further notice.
Um, sounds good. I think I'm going to take a second on the motion. Let's do that first. Is there support?
I'll support that.
Support on that. Uh, just a brief discussion, um, Mr. Lloyd, I just want to make sure, without the petitioner present, uh, is it best for us to, uh, to table to a date certain, uh, to table?
I think we, we should table it without date. I mean, we haven't heard from the petitioner, we don't know that the next available date is what's going on, um, you know, it's a little discerning that we didn't get a call or anything or no notice.
Right. I, I would agree to not, to not put a date in. By not putting a date, we will have to re-advertise, but that's okay, I think, without them here knowing whether they will be here next time and having to do this all over again.
Better to verify and, and I should remember, but I don't, Ms. Posey, was your motion with a date or without a date?
Without a date.
Okay, very good. All right, um, that being said, Mr. Box, Mr. Lloyd, do you have any other comments on this before we go to a vote?
No.
Okay, very good. Um, a motion by Ms. Posey, support by Mr. Piper, to table this, uh, until rescheduled. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, that item is tabled, uh, and thank you for the help on that, I appreciate it. That moves us on to item eight, uh, the first portion of which is 8A, a variance request from sections 10.0311 EF2 and 10.031 EF3. This would be for, uh, I don't know that I have the permanent parcel on here, but it would be for 16280, Vialmontella Drive, uh, in Velagio Lot 83. Patrick Kenny is the petitioner. Mr. Box, could you, um, uh, bring us up to speed and review this, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Uh, so this is another item that's been before you, uh, previously. Um, the, the situation, a- as you can see in the image behind you, is, uh, that a, a pool patio, uh, with a hot tub and fireplace, uh, was constructed, uh, and it is, uh, violating the ordinance in two places, uh, with the hot tub being too close as well as the, uh, fire pit or patio area. Uh, when they came previously, they asked for specific dimensions for the variance. Um, those were, I believe, two feet, six inches or something along that line for the fire pit and, and five feet or six feet for the hot tub and pool, uh, and upon, you guys did grant those variances and our building official did go out there and take some measurements and they're actually, uh, closer than what they had asked for, so they're back seeking a little bit more of a variance, especially the fire pit going from two feet, six inches down to two inches. Uh, they are very close to the property line. Uh, so that being said, uh, just to walk through, uh, what we talked about when they were here previously, you do see the, uh, township building permit that was applied for, uh, and approved back in 2016, uh, which does not match the image, uh, on the right. Uh, they did build something other than what was approved in the permit, uh, so this has been hanging out there for a number of years, uh, and they are now here to, to clean up the situation, uh, seeking a variance. Uh, and again, here's just some, some pictures of the existing condition. As you see, the, the fire pit is very close, the, the fence you see there is on the property line, uh, and as measured by the building official, it is approximately two inches, uh, from the property line, so that is the variance they're seeking there, and the hot tub was four feet, and that's the variance they're seeking there. Uh, we did circulate this internally, different departments, as you saw in the review letter, had, had some comments about this. Um, I think really what was mentioned previously, uh, you know, engineering and water and sewer, uh, were very concerned. Um, it, it's one thing to have a, a bit of a variance, but roughly three and a half feet, uh, should be maintained, uh, for, for allow, to allow for proper drainage, uh, and we've already allowed them to go to two feet, six inches, uh, in one location. They're now actually seeking two inches and that, that is a concern, how that may affect drainage, um, a- as well as, you know, it's difficult to see what the practical difficulty is. I know you guys did vote on this before, so I guess I'll, I'll defer to you on, on what that practical difficulty actually is. Uh, but, but overall, staff does have, uh, concerns, um, specifically with the two inches, um, and, and I guess we will defer to the applicant to provide their, their difficulty.
Forget, thank you, Mr. Box. Uh, Mr. Lloyd, I did have one question on this and I, I should know this, but we don't have them come back terribly often. When we grant a variance, there was two items along the same lot line. Are we granting a variance, or did we grant a variance to the item, or was it a straight distance from that side lot line? So in other words, you had two, you had two objects that were at different distances from the lot line. Did, did we grant that separation and it didn't matter what they were building to it, or did we grant it to the site plan or the portion of the site plan?
It's a good question. I, I'd have to look at the minutes, right? What did the minutes reflect? Um, we could take a look at that. What meeting was it? And I'm sure we can pull it up as we're sitting here today.
I think it was, I think it was September.
September.
Meeting.
September. Okay. I can pull it up and I can, I can quote you what the motion was.
If you could, my only concern being if we get into, if we get into discussions on a variance that we've already granted at two feet, if it is blanket to the side lot line as opposed to an individual area, I would think that would maybe affect our ability, you know, if we've already granted a variance to two feet.
Well, yeah, the, the variance is our, for two different portions of the ordinance, so you've granted two variances for two specific items. The, the hot tub is treated differently than the patio area.
Than the patio is.
Correct.
Understood, okay, very good. And, all right. I just wanted to make sure, and, and Mr. Lloyd, if you can look that up, that would be appreciated, just so we have that, uh, that taken care of or understood. Uh, before we go to the petitioner, is there any questions, uh, from the board from Mr. Box? Hearing none. Uh, Piper, hearing none, uh, petitioner could come forward, uh, stick your name and address for the record and give any comments that you have.
This one or this one?
Uh, if, if you could do this one, because we might do public comments and, uh...
Will you put the permits back up?
All right, I'm Patrick, Patrick Kenny, 16280, Vialmontella.
My name is Gina Kenny, same address.
Thank you. Mr. Kenny, do you have any, uh, any extra comments past what Mr. Box had commented on?
Yes, I'd like to add a few things. Um, so, I know the drainage that Mr. Josh had mentioned, um, was, I think, really one of the only things that was mentioned in the reciprocating email that went around. And actually ironically enough, today Dave from the water and sewer department came over and he approved our pool final and said our drainage and our grading and the conclusion of the project was satisfactory, um, to conclude the pool final itself. He didn't reference anything about setbacks, um, I don't know if he knew or not, but the guy, the gentleman from the water and sewer department himself, today, gave us our pool final and actually complimented the pool itself, um, on all the projects he's been to and did not reference whatsoever, uh, any drainage concerns. We do have a main drain on the paver itself, about 18 foot long, right between the pool and the fire pit and the hot tub. Um, and pavers themselves, as I'm sure you all know, rest on slag and dirt, they're not underground with footings and there's been no drainage issues. He, and the sewer, there's no obstruction to the sewer as well, um, given the pool area, so everything is drained fine and the water and sewer department themselves ironically today, um, spoke on that behalf and, and approved it. So, with reference to the drainage issue, which I think is the really only issue that I think Josh kind of talked about there, um, there's no issue, at least on their behalf, from being there within the past 24 hours. Uh, and yes, I will take responsibility. Maybe you'll see if you can go back to that, um, one other clip, Josh, if you could. So when the, when the, you can see the overview on the left-hand side, when the fence was built and the pool was built, we had an issue with our HOA and they would not allow us to put a perimeter fence up and contrary to the city, which wants fence on the perimeter of lot line. So we actually, when the construction was done, and obviously we talked about last time, there was a lot of confusion, there was a lot of, um, between the contractor, we did it ourselves, it was all paid for and contracted out, we were told and under the impression that we had two to three feet on the outside of that westernmost portion of the fence, which you can see, we actually sodded and have maintained for the past five years now, almost exactly five years. So when they came up for the re-inspection and told us that our fence was on the site, or on the, um, lot line, we were surprised, because of course we've been, we sodded it, we've been maintaining it. We thought we had extra space off the fence line to basically appease the HOA to not have a lot line fence and then also work with the city to have it close enough where they still approved it. So we did have two moving parts there with Mr. Joe Maple and our HOA. Our HOA actually threatened to sue us, which we put to rest and Joe Maple approved the fence at a later date. And again, we thought we had two, two feet at least off that fence line, which is why the first time I approved, I, I measured at two feet and asked for a two-foot variance versus at the outermost point of that circle, a three-inch or two-inch variance. Um, so when they came back out for the re-inspect and said we were, the closest point was two inches, it was to our surprise, which is why now we're back here, paying the fee again to be here, the stress to be here, obviously, um, you know, with the family tree that's taken care of as we closed the pool, um, so we accept the responsibility for that. And again, uh, you know, I think the hardship we talked about last time, um, was the irregular, irregular shape of the lot and we have no neighbors still to this day in that vacant lot, so when we built, we had, there was no definitions, I guess, per se, outside of the stakes in the ground, which we had no idea of until they told us about sites and lots, we're not builders. Um, so we thought we had that two extra feet on that side of the site. Um, I think if a neighbor was there, it would have been a little more clear where our boundaries were, but the contractors, whether it was honest, honest mistake or an after the fact mistake, they built it as it stands and we didn't, as homeowners, we didn't know any better, um, which again, we asked for your forgiveness the last time around and while we're back here again, now recognizing, okay, the new variance that we're asking for. Um, we've done everything the city has asked, we've completed all our pool inspections to date, everything has been approved except for this hot tub, hot tub final and paver final. Um, we actually removed that cabana, the cabana that's there is now removed because that was not, um, there. We've converted the fire pit to a flower bed because that was supposedly an issue. Um, our mechanical is complete, our pool final is complete as of today. Uh, again, everything the city has thrown of, thrown at us, we have cooperated with and, and satisfied. Obviously, the reconstruction of that wall is not entirely feasible at this time, um, and we ask, if you can see, I drew a diagram, we have 61 feet of retaining wall and pillars and only 10 foot, three inches of that spans within two feet. And really only one foot of that is within a foot in the two and three-quarter inches. Um, so we're, you know, we're asking for the variance there for that one point of the wall essentially, out of 61 feet, to be, um, granted the variance. And you can see from the slope and this green space still on the fence and outside the fence, that there's enough drainage, which seems to be the, you know, really the only issue. And again, Dave, Dave was his name today, um, approved everything on his end. So I guess that's, that's where we're at, um, you know, with the diagrams, with what we're asking and with what we've done cooperating with the city and again, knowing it was not done at the homeowner's discretion and with the hardship of the irregular shaped lot, trying to fit all of our amenities into an area, um, we're here today, you know, obviously as stated previously.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner from the board?
One of the things I have an issue with is, yes, there's not a neighbor next door, but potentially there will be someday and what we voted on today affects the future owner of that lot as well. That, I mean, that is awful close to their lot line and potentially noise and, you know, for them to enjoy their own property, so I, I have an issue with that.
May I, may I?
If, if he has a question for you, you can answer the question. I'm not sure if he had a question, I think it was more of an observation.
I, I, I don't understand even, even with the, where you thought your lot line was, because I was in the same situation when I moved in my house. There was an empty lot next door and to keep the weeds from coming in my property, I was mowing the lawn, you know, farther and farther out and the person that was spraying for weeds was spraying where I mowed and after a while, I had a nice lawn, but I was five foot into the next lot line. When they went to build, all of a sudden, I lost my property. You know, you, you forget where the, where the lot line is. Um, but having said that, I remember, um, at the time, my house, according to my survey, was five foot in from my lot line, which was fine, and it turned out that my, my house was only, uh, 50 inches from the lot line. Found that out when they staked out the property next door and when the township came out, they told me that if my house would have been three inches over, I would have had to move my house. No ifs, ands, or buts about it, because that was, it was my responsibility to know where my lot line was, even though I wasn't the original owner of my house. Uh, all the surveys showed that. So I understand exactly where you're coming from, but I'm also thinking of the new owner, because what happened now, the, the house next door to me, when they built it, they had to move all their stakes over to comply with setbacks between the houses. So if we grant this variance, that's going to force that homeowner, I would think, farther over. I'm, I'm not sure how the zoning ordinance goes for that, but I, I'm afraid we're putting a hindrance on a future owner of the next door property.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
I have a question for the petitioner, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So if you could go back to the permits, Josh. So it looks like, uh, the permit on the left was approved in 2016. When was this all constructed and completed?
So this was completed in 2016, they started in the fall of 17. And actually, I, I have three things. One is, if I could, I understand, um, Mr. David's aspect there, however, everyone's been notified in our sub of the variance and no one is here today speaking against it, including that said neighbor. Um, I think that speaks a little bit of volume to the fact that they don't recognize it as an issue.
Just, just as a quick question, if you're going to bring that up, is, is there a neighbor living next door or is it an empty lot?
No, it's an empty lot, but we, we know who it is and, well, yeah, but no one in our subdivision has, came here to speak on the behalf of not allowing the variance. And I think if they're a builder's, they're a builder's family, I think they would recognize an issue if they saw it as an issue, um, just my personal perspective. And I think, touching on the noise thing, you know, I don't think, it's already approved at two feet, we're at two inches. I don't know if 22 inches, with all due respect, would really change the landscape of the neighboring, um, you know, site plan or house or structures in the backyard. We're asking for a matter of 22 inches, um, based on the prior variance that was granted. And with that said, I do, I, I know you guys show that building permit with that, however, I have a, a plan here that was drawn on, that was reviewed for compliance, um, right here, 10, 14, 16, that shows the wall and the hot tub. I don't, again, it was not my dealings, I don't know if Mr. Joe Maples and our contractor sat together and drew it out, but they have a copy here of the, a clo, a much closer version to what was done than the first version, it does not include the, um, the hot tub and the fire pit, because we always had a hot tub and fire pit in our plans, so I don't know, that's like the very, very original. I don't know, and it's the same date, so I, I, again, I don't know what would happen, I don't know transpired, obviously, it's been a nightmare with this contractor, um, he's disappeared ever since, so I, I, on our records, we do have a different drawing outside of that one. Um, again, I don't know when it was amended.
Is, may, uh, is that one, uh, signed by Joe Maples, the one you have?
Um, yeah, but there's drawings on it that they drew and labeled together with numbers, so I don't know when it...
It's, it's that plan with markings on it.
Gotcha.
Mr. Box, are you, are you familiar, I think the, the other drawing is referring to is in our packet, are you familiar with the?
I'm looking for it right now.
Give me two.
Yeah, this, I think that's the same exact permit, it's just hand drawn in adding...
Adding in the...
Adding in, so obviously that was added in after...
There's, there's...
After the approval.
The print and then there's drawn in, I see.
Yeah, it was obviously added in after the approval, or else it would show up on the original version.
Well, and, and maybe there might be some case where there's two drawings, but this is, uh, yeah, it's, yes. So to echo Mr. Box's point, looking at this drawing and as Mr. Box mentions it, there is, I mean, obviously, drawing can happen after it's approved and it does appear that there's, uh, you know, it's marked up with pen over top of the original drawing. So I, I certainly understand why you bring it up. I, I would say on my end that I...
Yeah, I, I didn't draw on it, so I'm just somehow, some way, it ended in my hands and your hands, I just...
Understood, and I recognize when you bring it up, just recognize for us, it's probably not...
Understood.
It probably won't be compelling.
Understood.
So, any other questions? Uh, hearing none, I think I'm going to go out to the audience. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this request? If you do, please come forward to the podium. Uh, this one over here, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes for any comments you might have. Hearing no comments, seeing no one standing, and, uh, unless anyone objects, I'm going to bring it back to the board. Um, Mr. Lloyd, were you able to pull up that, that variance? What, what did we grant last time?
It was just a straight distance for, there's two of them, it was five feet for the hot tub, two feet for the patio.
Okay, so we did, and Mr. Box indicated it is two different portions of the ordinance, we did it for those portions of the ordinance and we did those, those two, two distances. Um, I actually did have a question, I, I see, uh, we have other staff in the, in the audience, I don't know if other staff wish to speak tonight, um, but if you could, Mr. Van Tiflin, I did have one question for you. Sorry for pulling you in here. The petitioner indicated that he had someone from Water Sewer out there today finalizing a permit. I'm not familiar with pool permits, I don't know the rhythm, I don't know what Water Sewer does. Regardless of what a, um, and for the record, uh, this is Mr. Jim Van Tiflin, he's our en, our township engineer. Um, you have concerns about the drainage, regardless of what a, an inspector might have said from Water and Sewer today, is that accurate?
That's correct. And I was not aware that Water and Sewer had somebody out there today.
Um, okay, and, and Mr. Box had indicated that kind of your, your feeling is three and a half feet is pretty much the, the minimum of the space that you're comfortable with for drainage.
That, that's correct.
Okay. So I wanted to verify, thank you. Sorry, sorry for pulling you up for that.
If I could add to that too, I think the three and a half feet, uh, number, uh, is even evident in the, the ordinance itself, so we require fences to be on the property line, uh, and if they are not going to be on the property line, we require them to be three and a half feet off the property line, and it's for that same reason, for, for maintenance and drainage purposes.
Okay. All right, um, well, I guess I would, I'd have two comments and, and there's time for other people to have comments as well. Um, I, I think that, uh, I still feel that the, the practical difficulty we found last time is, is compelling to me, um, but obviously with the distance on the, on the shorter distance, we have our engineering professionals telling us there's bad drainage and I know we have to balance practical difficulties with health, safety and welfare and drainage certainly seems to fall among that. So just my, my thoughts is that I still see some potential cause for one, but, uh, in my, my opinion, not the other. So I don't know if there's any other comments or, or questions, but that was all I had this evening.
I, I do agree with you. Um, the one variance for the hot tub, I think it is, I can, you know, I think the last time, I think the staff even mentioned the three and a half feet. We went down to two feet. I felt, I think we, we granted that variance, obviously I felt that you could still get a lawnmower in there, you could still provide that drainage through a two-foot section. To me, two inches, I, I think were really pushing. I know we talked about 22 inches, but it's a, it's a big jump from requiring three and a half feet, reducing it down to two feet, to now saying you're essentially on the property line, so.
For the record, it's seven and a half feet is the original requirement.
Correct. But I think at the last, I think the staff still wanted three and a half at the last meeting, and we, we still allowed the two feet beyond the staff recommendation, so. Yeah, that's, that's my two cents, I, you know, I'm personally, just speaking for myself, I think I'd be comfortable, more comfortable with the hot tub, um, than the wall for the fire pit.
Any other questions, comments or motions? And I would add that we should probably take these motions separately, um, on these two requests.
Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion if you'd like.
Certainly.
Um, I will make a motion to, uh, with regards to section 10 dot 0311 EF3, and that is to grant a variance to allow a hot tub to be within a minimum of four feet from the side property line when seven and one half feet is required.
side property line when seven and one-half feet is required. And that is basically, as I stated, the four feet will still allow for the three and a half foot, will still allow to mow, to maintain, and to provide drainage.
And that motion just to confirm was to grant the variance?
Correct.
I think you set it, but I didn't catch on the front.
Correct.
All right. Motion by Mr. DeCoster, is there support?
Support.
Support by Posey. I'm gonna call roll on this one. Mr. DeCoster?
Yes.
Ms. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. That motion passes unanimously. Any other motions?
Yeah, I can make a motion on this one as well. I would make a motion with regards to Section 10 dot 0311 EF2, and that will be to deny the variance to allow an existing deck to be located within two inches from the side property line when seven and one-half feet is required.
Very good. Is there support?
I'll support that.
Support by Mr. Piper. I'm going to call roll on this again. Mr. DeCoster?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Ms. Posey?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming in. I appreciate its difficult situation.
So, we're gonna knock down a wall for 22 inches?
All right, our next item... Our next item is a request from the zoning ordinance, Section 10 point 0311 EF1 and 10 point 0356 A1. This would be for 47699 Delawski Court, and the petitioner is Timothy Hewitt, I believe I'm pronouncing that correctly. Mr. Box, could you take us through this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. As you mentioned, the site is located in Woodbury Estates, and it is for variance, there are two separate variances here as well. For, it has to do with a freestanding building or a, an open-air structure, if you will. Ten feet from another structure is what's required. They're seeking to have it nine feet, as well as an open-air structure. They're gonna be partially enclosing that. So, as you saw in your packet, the reviews, fire had no objection, assessing had no objection, and planning had largely no objection, and engineering mentioned that it does not pose any engineering-related risks or issues. I guess I will say the rear property line does have a 12-foot easement, so I know they have to avoid going in that easement. So, I think they could probably still fit it on the property and maintain the 10-foot distance. And I guess I would defer to the applicant, if they're here, to explain whether or not it could fit that. With regards to the partially enclosure, so our accessory structures are treated slightly different here, and so this being an open-air structure, open-air structure, the ordinance does require them to remain open-air. They are proposing to close off one wall. I think it's mostly for screening. They're closing off the wall, I believe, closest to the neighbor on that side. And so, again, I think, for the most part, our departments do not have any concerns. They don't violate, you know, anything with assessing or fire. It's just the 10 feet going down to nine feet closer to the house. We see that a lot with pools, typically because of, as I mentioned, the easement on the rear property line. This one, they may or may not be able to fit that in, and still maintain 10 feet, but there is an easement on the rear property line here.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Box. Is there any question for Mr. Box from the board?
What defines this as a structure that's required to be 10 feet away? Is there footings or something that, or is it just a freestanding, surface-mounted?
I think there's some images in your packet. I'm trying to turn to them myself right now. It's essentially a gazebo, so it's open air on all sides.
But I mean, is there, do you know if there's footings, or is it, is there anything structural that, or is it just sitting on top of the patio?
I believe it's sitting on top of the patio. And that may be the end of the patio. Looking at the renderings, it appears to be the end of the patio. So, in order to get it that one extra foot, it would be essentially hanging off the patio.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Box, we haven't had one of these for a while. In fact, it's been, possibly three or four years. I don't remember the last one we had one. My understanding with this ordinance was that it was to discourage, discourage people from building accessory structures and living in them to some extent. Is that, is that your understanding, or is there any other reasoning in here for this particular ordinance that you're aware of?
Well, it's so, we're treating them differently because somebody may have a shed and also wish to have a gazebo. But if you start, if you have what starts off as a gazebo, and you start putting walls around it, it can become a second shed, which we wouldn't allow. So, that's why the ordinance says that you cannot partially enclose.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Box. Is the petitioner present? If you are, please come forward to the table, state your name and address for the record, and give any comments that you have.
My name's Zach.
I'm Mike. Where was ZLM, where the contractors that...
Okay. So, my apologies. It's Zach, and what was your name, sir?
Mike.
Mike, okay. And Zach or Mike, can you give an address for your company?
51343 Oral.
Oral?
Shelby.
Okay. Okay. Do you have anything that you wanted to add to Mr. Box's comments?
So, to be clear, a couple things...
Sorry, if you could, can you just push the microphone this way?
To be clear, that structure's not a surface-mounted. It's a 42-inch six-by-six, and it's not a gazebo. It's a pavilion. So, it's a covered roof, shingled roof, five-inch gutter, tongue-graved ceiling. It's got power in it. It's on an exposed aggregate patio, and we had approval for the nine-foot setback from the home. What ended up happening is the homeowner come out, and they wanted a wall so they could put the TV on the wall and hang out in there, and this and that. And they planned on putting some shrubs or arborvitae's or trees down that property line as well, but this, get this built, and it was our mistake. I talked to Mike, I think it's Mike Adamo.
Mr. Badamo.
Yeah, and Joe Maples about this. So, what happened is, is we're, our carpenters were there doing the job, and the homeowner come out and said, can you put this wall in for us? We'd like to hang the TV on there, because usually we'll hang the TV from a post mount from the ceiling. And so, us not really thinking about it on the fly, we said, shouldn't be a problem, because it's not really a structural. It's just a wall between the two six-by-six posts. Well, it created a problem within the neighbors. We contacted the city. They said, yeah, that, you know, you need to get a variance for this. We're like, oh, no problem. They said, you know, you gotta be 10 foot from the, from the, from the home, but we already have approval, a building permit, to build the pavilion 9-2 from the home. We got approval for that. So, we were confused on putting this wall in, which is by no means structural. It's just between the posts. It's cosmetic.
If I could interrupt you, and I think we have drawings. Can you describe the wall a little bit more deep? Is it a solid wall? Is it plank?
It is a solid wall, and I don't know if you got the updated drawings. I don't know if it'd be better for me to...
If you have one, if you could give us one copy of it, we can just pass it down. It'd be helpful just to know what it looks like. If you could, just mind, there's a step there that's sometimes hard to see.
That's ultimately what we've done, and then we've also, you know, proposed another, because of the neighbor having the wall on the neighbor's side, putting it in the rear. And it's not in the, this pavilion's not in the easement at all. So, that's...
Here, you can go ahead and take it. We'll just...
So, you're, are you requesting two walls, the side and...
Just one.
Okay.
And in all fairness, we did put this wall up without contacting the city, not realizing it was gonna be a situation, per se.
And I should mention, you had mentioned that before, for better or for worse, some people, you know, some people are more concerned when it's already built. Our job isn't to look to see whether the thing is built and penalized or approved based on it.
Sure.
So, I appreciate you mentioning it. For us, we try to make the same, we try to look at the same regardless. So, someone else might be concerned about that. That's not our purview. We're not looking to help you or hurt you based on that count on this point. So...
Fair enough.
Do you have anything else for us this evening?
I hope that just clarifies, you know, the situation.
And I appreciate the drawing. I think we had one in here, but I had a question about which side it's on, and that helped. Ms. Posey?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, you had made the comment that it created a problem with the neighbors. The problem was they were upset about the wall?
So, the problem is, is there's, yes, it appears that way, that the neighbor was upset, because she felt like it was blocking her view. But the strange part is, is on her other side of her property, she's got a row of trees. And if they put a row of trees in, which they're gonna do, you'll never see that wall anyways. It's just for their own sake. They didn't do it to block their neighbor, to create a ruckus. They're really low-key folks, easy to get along with. I think, I'm not sure what happened. I haven't talked to the neighbor. I have not got involved. We've provided them with an attorney as well to fight with their HOA over this, because the HOA is saying that you cannot have it, but their HOA is so out, or their bylaws are so outdated, it doesn't state anything in regards to a pavilion. It's in regards to a gazebo, which is not a gazebo by any sort of way.
I should ask the question. I know you specified a difference between a gazebo and a pavilion. I certainly am not an expert on building definitions, but could you explain? So, are you saying a pavilion is implying that it is a solid structure with footings or post sunk, whereas a gazebo is a temporary aluminum-type structure that you bolt on?
Typically, a gazebo does not have 42-inch post-hole structure in the ground. It's usually something that sits on a slab, similar to like maybe a shed, per se. And obviously, the gazebos are, I think they're called gazebos at Costco. I'm not real sure. I've never really used one, but they bolt to a structure, right?
Okay.
And there's, people have the curtains, and they're in the neighborhood. It's like, what's the difference between a cheap $20 curtain and a nice, I mean, this is an improvement. It's not, it's not gaudy by any means. It's built like a house, you know?
Very good. Anything else, Ms. Posey?
No, I'm also...
Mr. DeCoster?
I do have one question. Josh, do you know, was the building permit approved with a nine-foot separation between structures?
I'm not aware of that. It sounds like it is 9.2, or nine feet, two inches, is what he's saying. That may be the case. If that is the case, it probably shouldn't have been, because we do require a 10-foot separation, but it may very well have been approved. I don't know.
I'm just curious. Thank you.
After speaking to Joe Maples, he had explained that the reason that it was approved for the, for the structure that it is, is because originally it did not have any closed, it wasn't closed off at all. And somehow, there was a difference between having a partially enclosed structure versus having a wide-open structure that changed the distance allowed from the home.
Understood. I think that makes sense, Mr. Box, if I'm understanding it correctly. All right. Is there any, I think if there's no further questions, Mr. Piper, you're good. If there's no further questions from the board this time, I'm going to bring it out to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this request? If you do, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes if you wish to speak. One thing I'd mention, and this would be for any potential residents and for the petitioner's contractors who are here, just please maintain that whoever's speaking, give them their chance to speak. Part of my job is to make sure everybody gets their chance and that we're able to have a conversation if one is needed. So, if anyone wants to come up, please do so. Just making sure that we respect each other and don't have arguments in the middle of conversations. Anyone wish to speak? I'm not seeing anyone at this time. Just, I'm just gonna mention, because it sounds like there was some concern here. Once I close the public portion, I do not go back out again on this item. So, if you wish to speak, now is your chance. I will not accept comments later, later in the agenda for this. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion if there's no concern from the board, and bring it back to the board for any questions, comments, or motions. And I would also indicate that, similar to the last one, we do have two variance requests here, and regardless of if the responses are the same or different, I believe we should treat these as two different motions. That'll be for the freestanding building located within nine feet, and then to have an accessory structure that's enclosed.
I can go ahead and make a motion if you'd like.
Go ahead.
I will make a motion with regards to Section 10 dot 0311 EF1, and that is to grant the variance to allow a freestanding building to be located at nine feet from another building when 10 feet is required.
Mr. DeCoster, could you just give briefly your reasoning on that?
My reasoning is based on staff recommendations, and the staff noting that it is a slightly skewed shape of a lot and features a 10-foot-wide storm easement along the rear property line, which may inhibit the patio.
Motion by Mr. DeCoster, is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Posey. I'm going to call the roll on this one. Mr. DeCoster?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. That motion passes. Are there any other motions here? I can make one if you really need me to. You've had to make all of them tonight.
I'll do one more.
You gotta love himself on that last one.
I will make a motion with regards to Section 10 dot 0356 A1, and that is to grant a variance to allow an open-air structure to be partially enclosed. And that for the same practical difficulty as the first one.
All right. Motion by Mr. DeCoster, is there support?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Posey. I'm gonna call the roll. Mr. DeCoster?
Yes.
Ms. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. Piper?
Yes.
That motion passes 4-0, and those variances are granted. Thank you for working with the homeowner, and obviously, please make sure you finish out the project and try to keep everybody as happy as you can.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And again, if you come up, just mind the step. We've had a few people almost fall on it, and, yeah. I've thought of it.
Oh, right there.
Thank you. All right. The next item would be Item 8C. This is a variance request from the zoning ordinance, Section 10 point 1603 B33A and 10 point 1605 D1. This would be for Permanent Parcel 0836452002, and Michael Yatuma, hopefully I pronounced it correctly, is the petitioner. Mr. Box, could you review this for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. As you mentioned, this is located at Hall and Grashit, the northwest corner of Hall and Grashit. As you see, it's kind of an oddly-shaped parcel. It's been vacant for quite some time. At one time, I believe it had an off-ramp from Grashit Avenue to Hall Road, and it's been vacant ever since that off-ramp was removed. The variances they are seeking are, as you see in the image there and what was in your packet, is for a setback reduction for the call box, as well as a setback reduction for the road frontage or front yard setback from 70 feet to 50 feet. Fire did not have any objection, as it did not violate any other fire code. Assessing had the same comments. Planning, we did have a number of comments. It is an irregular-shaped property, and a grant of the setback variance, as far as the front yard setback, would likely result in safer vehicular movement. The site does have a width of less than 300 feet in all locations. There isn't, there's nowhere that they could put a call box on the site. It's less than 300 feet everywhere. And the noise produced by the call box, unless heavily screened, may result in some unfair justice from the point of view of the neighbors. Engineering had some comments, as you see here. I think that largely, they're in the same boat as the planning department, that the front yard setback would be acceptable. It would actually align with a lot of other gas stations along Hall Road, including the one directly across the street from this, that are set out on the road the same distance. But the setback request for the call box needs to really be looked at, and I would think that were a variance to be granted, it should be conditioned on the fact that there would be some noise reduction measures taken. I did put some documents on your desk before you arrived this evening. I emailed those to you as well today. That's from the petitioner who is here, with regards to noise and how sound travels, and they have some white papers discussing that. Additionally, they did turn in a supplemental or a second site plan, where they have moved it back from 113 feet to 133 feet, so an extra 20 feet. And they are proposing a little bit more vegetative screening, and they've angled the speaker, as they describe it in the papers that I gave you today, in an attempt to lessen some of that noise.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Box. Is there any questions for Mr. Box from the board? Hearing none, is the petitioner here. If you are, please come forward to the center table and state your name and address for the record.
How are you doing? Vito Pamplona from Pamplona Construction Management, on behalf of Michael Yatuma, who's...
Jason Fleese with the Emler Group.
Any comments to add, gentlemen?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to present in front of you today. We are, we took the planners, Mr. Box and Mr. Van Tiflin's comments to heart, and worked at looking at this from multiple angles. and worked, uh, at looking at this from multiple angles. Uh, what we could do, we understand the, the spirit of the ordinance is to be able to sit in your backyard and not hear the speaker box. So we looked at, um, the, the four requirements for the ZBA to, uh, permit, to approve this variance. Uh, first is the strict enforcement, uh, requirements be a unnecessary practical difficulty. Um, this, this site does not have any opportunity to put a call box on it. There's, uh, the lot line's two hundred eighty feet offset, you'd, you'd be in Grashit Avenue. So we looked at, uh, we initially had, uh, two, uh, drive-throughs on this property. We reduced to one. Uh, we moved the call box, uh, to a distance further around the corner. And then on this last iteration, we moved an additional twenty feet, still, uh, being able to have the appropriate stacking for that drive-through. Um, but the difficulties, the three hundred feet, we do not have an opportunity to place that anywhere on the site. Looking at the, uh, the ordinance, it looks at it strictly from just a, a distance. Uh, if you think of a photometric plan and light, light pollution and light trespass on a neighbor's property, there's many mitigation or, um, uh, different, uh, elements you can, um, provide to, provide that, um, to prevent that light trespass. So we looked at the decibel level in the same, same way. Um, the first thing was just changing the angle of that speaker box actually, uh, is a very significant, uh, decrease in the decibel level. You know, anybody that's been to a, a concert or around a speaker, as you, you know, you stand in front of it or you stand behind it, you know, it's significantly different. Um, we also provided some additional vegetation right there around that call box. And, um, and, and then along, uh, we reduced the si- size of the building and increased the island between and added another row. So each one of those layers will also provide, um, a layer of protection. And the technology itself, um, the old analog systems, the, um, other systems, you're easily over a hundred and, a hundred plus decibels. The system that we are proposing, uh, will be eighty-five decibel max. And, uh, if you look at some of the other information in the white papers, within a sixty-four foot radius, you're, 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 um, dissipating down back to ambient, um, volumes. So, uh, we, we looked at where we, we max that, uh, decibel level at. Uh, we want to take away any safety considerations. Uh, so, uh, OSHA standard is eighty-five. You can listen to eighty-five, uh, without, without any restriction. Uh, at ninety is where, you know, you have eight hour, uh, restriction for decibel level. But that would be right at the speaker box, that you'd have that eighty-five decibel level. Within sixty-four feet, you're dissipating back to the ambient volume. Um, so the, the newer technology would be digital. It would not be analog. It would max at eighty-five. There's also an ABC system, which is automated volume control, which will reduce, um, so at Grashit and Hall, you have ambient sound of sixty-five to seventy decibels. Um, you want a volume that's, for that call box, approximately fifteen decibels higher to, to be able to have clarity and be able to have the interaction, the customer experience at that point. With, um, at nighttime, that, that decibel level, ambient decibel level can drop. This automated volume control will drop the, the volume of the speaker with that ambient volume. So we looked at, potentially go all the way down to fifty-five, which is, uh, you know, lower than the, the discussion we're having here. Or about the discussion we're having here, fifty-five, so, um, so looking at the, the first standard, you know, we don't have a place that we could put three hundred. We worked through men- many, many, um, iterations to get this layout and, and get the call box moved as far away from the residential as well. And then we implemented other measures. The, the, the ordinance itself is just restrictive and look at it from a distance standpoint. But there's many other measures that you can do to reduce decibel level. The, the additional layers of landscape are above and beyond what, what is needed to, to drop that decibel level. But we want to provide that as an assurance that we have the safety and the welfare of the, the, the surrounding residents in mind. Uh, the second standard is, uh, uh, unique situations to pro- uh, the property creating practical difficulty. So initially, there was a bypass lane that came from Grashit and extended to Hall through the property. There's, this falls in three zones and this property was created out of old MDOT right-ofways. So it's, it's very unique and it's, and it's smaller in size, three point one five acres. You look at other C two properties, they have a distance of three hundred feet to place a call box. This, this site does not allow for that. So it's a unique property. It's located on two MDOT, uh, uh, roadways. Yeah, there's not too many sites that you'll see, you know, with this, these characters. In fact, it is the only site that I've seen, so, um, there's other properties. We went just a mile down the road, uh, to the west. We looked at the Dairy Queen. Uh, the Dairy Queen has a call box within three hundred feet. Also, the Wendy's and the, the Tim Hortons. Um, so, uh, the Wendy's and Tim Hortons is, uh, zoned in the C two as well. Uh, the, the, the Tim Hortons is within six, like sixty-eight feet. They have the six-foot masonry wall, uh, no additional screening. Uh, the Wendy's drive-through is in the front. That has the, um, a little bit of landscaping and that same six-foot masonry wall and, uh, approximately a hundred and eighty feet of separation between the residential. Uh, the Dairy Queen has, uh, I think about a hundred and seventy feet of distance and they have, um, a larger wooded area between. But that's just three, three, um, businesses within a mile, just going west on, on Grashit, or excuse me, Hall Road. Um, the third item is, uh, the circumstances, unique property, were not created by the property owner. Um, the, the zoning, the current zoning was not created by the property owner and the way this, the, um, property combined these MDOT right-ofways to create this unique sh- shape and, uh, was not created by the property owner. So this is, uh, prior to, um, and, uh, feel this relief again for, uh, reasons with Dairy Queen and, and not having the three hundred foot is, is consistent with other properties. Uh, the fourth item would be, uh, we're not providing special privileges. Relief can be granted in such a fashion that the spirits of the ordinance is observed. Uh, the spirit of the ordinance is strictly for decibel level, um, and, and referring to the call box. And we believe we have many measures in place. Uh, we provide the sporting data. And I've looked at this, looked at this from, uh, multiple angles on what we can do to, to mitigate that and, and reduce. And, um, and, uh, have am- ambient levels well before it gets back to the property line.
All right, thank you. Uh, any other comments, uh, past that that you want to add outside your presentation? I may have preempted you. You might have another sheet there.
Well, we feel we've met the requirements. You know, respectfully, I say you approve these variances.
All right, any questions?
I, I'd like to add a couple things if I could, real quick. In regards to the decibel level of the talk box itself, if you look at the first dark gray line, that is the actual decibel level of where the sound is going to be traveling to. The outside circle is a max decibel level and you can see as it gets out to that, you know, outside layer there, that's gonna go down to the ambient level of cars on Hall Road. So, the vegetation behind it, there's another row of vegetation there in the island as well as the deciduous trees there. Each one of those layers of vegetation cut that sound down by twenty-five to fifty percent, depending on the caliper and size of vegetation. So w- w- we weren't, we weren't trying to just bring a development here and have a talk box that's going to be, you know, absurdly loud and i- then the neighbors would, it basically encumber their well-being and their living and their homes there. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to make this a win-win for everybody, for the township, for us as developers and for the homeowners. W- we're, we're even open to limiting hours of operation on the talk box from, you know, seven, eight in the morning to seven, eight at night. W- it's not gonna be a twenty-four hour drive-through. Uh, we're open to adding a, another layer of vegetation or deciduous trees between the, uh, masonry wall there, the decorative wall and the trees that we're providing in this iteration here. So we're open, we're not, you know, set in stone on this plan. We're willing to work with you guys. We're willing to work with the homeowners. We, we're not, we're not in here trying to, um, you know, just say, this is it, this is the plan, this is all we're gonna offer. W- w- we're, we wanna, we wanna figure it out and make sure that it's a win-win for everybody.
And, uh, thank you, Vito. That, that, um, visual that you can see was taking out of, taken out of the white papers. So it's actually taken with ninety decibels. It's gonna be lower than that at eighty-five. And that's with, looking at with zero obstructions. That, that, uh, is lab-tested and then also, um, field-tested to provide that graphic. And that's looking at with zero obstructions, where we're gonna be providing multiple layers of obstruction as well, so.
Any questions from the board to the petitioner?
One quick question. I just, I just want to make sure I understand. As far as the noise level, it's, from what you're saying, it sounds like you're, you are stating that by the time it gets to the other side of that wall, that the noise level will actually be less than what they have right now just from the road noise? Am I correct in understanding that?
Correct. Actually, before that. So that noise level will drop basically to ambient noise below Hall Road before it gets to the layer of deciduous trees that are in between the decorative wall and the, and the median there on the drive-through.
That's, that, that's my main concern. I want to make sure the homeowners are protected, uh, from, from quality of life.
Is well above and beyond.
You'll have a chance. Just, just patience.
Yeah.
If I could too, and I do, I do apologize. They did bring a PowerPoint and I'm just now remembering. Did you want me to pull that up? Did, did you have a PowerPoint you wanted to go through or?
We went through the-
Okay, I, I apologize.
That's okay. Any questions?
For the petitioner?
Yes. Any questions for Mr. Box?
No, actually, mine would be directed to Mr. Aloya.
Yes.
Um, they had indicated that they were willing to limit the talk box hours. Is that enforceable by the township or is that just an agreement with the petitioner and the township or how does that work?
Well, you can create a condition of the variance. So if you desire that to be a condition of the variance, then you can put that in, in the, uh, variance, um, itself.
Thank you.
You may, you don't have to tell us what it is, but is seven to seven enough with that? Just assuming there's a condition or whatever, is seven to seven enough for any business to, to operate out of there with the drive-through?
Yeah, I mean, it's, what, what we're looking at there is a tropical smoothie, something of that nature, right? I mean, the drive-through nowadays for food, it, we're not looking to put a Burger King there. It's not a Wendy's or anything like that, right? We're looking for food that's going to support the community, but it's also not heavily trafficked. So i- it could be tropical smoothie. It could be any, any number of food businesses. But it, it would work from even if it was eight to eight or, you know, nine, nine to eight. Whatever, whatever that would, i- it would work as long as the, the hours of operation could meet the dinner crowd, right? Majority of people, if you're gonna go get food and you're gonna go through a drive-through, they're, at that hour, they're going through a twenty-four hour drive-through. That's not what we're doing here.
That's what I want to make sure. It's essentially, I'm not looking for any more, I just want to make sure you're not gonna be open at four o'clock in the morning.
No, no, it's not, it's not a twenty-four hour drive-through. No, it's not. We will limit the hours of operation to it.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, I will take it out to the, uh, residents for public comment. Please keep in mind, uh, you have three minutes. Uh, please state your name and address and please address the board and not the petitioner. We'll make sure any questions get answered, uh, when the statements are done.
Mr. Tuckfield, um, I'd like to point out to the agenda, it says up to four minutes on your public comments.
I appreciate it. Thank you. That is correct.
Okay. So, Mr. Tuckfield, earlier before I get going, you stated that you had a concern for another variance, health, safety, and welfare. I just want to remind you of that. Um, also, these gentlemen are talking about decibels, okay? Oh, my name's John Parkinson, two four two six one Darwin Street. I'm directly affected by this property and what they plan to put there. Decibels of car stereos. Are you guys aware of those? Okay, car stereos going through those. We sleep in. We don't wake up at seven o'clock. In the springtime, we can hear the salespeople. Well, let me just go with my, my stated speech. Oh, are we putting the cart before the horse? Best of my knowledge, that property's not zoned for C two yet. You do have another, uh, zoning board of appeals meeting next week, I believe, for that. So it's not even a C two property yet. "We respect the Michigan electorate's choice to pass the MMMA, but we also have a responsibility to protect the rights of homeowners to live safely and nuisance-free in their homes." This was a partial quote from the Macomb Township Supervisor Frank Viviano. "I wish to express my family's opposition to this requested variance. As the only colonial bordering this area, our master bedroom and our bathroom window overlook the property requesting the variance." "We already hear Russ Milney Ford's intercom during the springtime when our doors are open, when they page their salespeople." "To allow this variance would be creating a nuisance as well as a quality of life issue." "Though the call box drive-through isn't slated for twenty-four hour service, we would still hear the call box traffic during open hours, especially during spring and summertime when the windows open. Not to mention the trash collection and deliveries that will likely happen during the early morning hours." Boom. Have you ever heard those things slam? When they pick those dumpsters up? Boom. We would be, our bedroom would be right in line with that trash compact, trash collection, um, box. In itself, it creates a nuisance. No amount of trees or six-foot wall will dampen the sound that will exponentially increase due to the proposed plan. We have vegetation there right now and we still hear the boom, boom, boom that travels all along Grashit, all along Hall Road. We hear the, we hear Russ Milney's, um, like I said, their intercom when they call their salespeople, okay? Um, so you have a, you know, safety, welfare, health, it's a nuisance. Decibels of car stereos, can they guarantee that these are, these are gonna be turned down and nobody's gonna be blasting those during the hours of operation? Um, again, this is zoned for C, best of my knowledge, R one, C one. We're putting the cart before the horse. Um, one more thing real quick. A neighbor, my neighbor directly west of me, she couldn't be here, so she wanted me to express her concerns as well, so I'm gonna do that. She said, "We already have at least seven gas stations, convenience stores, and eighteen eating establishments within a mile. None of those have houses directly behind them. The clientele, noise, traffic, et cetera, will greatly impact the quality of life and property value. Don't put it here if you wouldn't want it in your backyard." Basic principle, treat others as you want to be treated. Thank you.
Mr. Parkinson, if you could, you read the note out. Could you give us the name and address if you have it? My assumption is you mean-
I don't have her address, but it's, her name's Sandy Fennell.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this? Thank you, ma'am. And as Mr. Parkinson said, I did misspeak. We do have four minutes, so my apologies. Uh, if you have, uh, could come up to the podium, give your name and address for the record and give any comments you might have.
Hi, my name is Carol Sutherland. I live at four five three 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 Abington Circle. And we had no idea that the call box was changed to one thirty feet and I am pretty upset. My property is right at the corner, right up at the corner. We just, we have a pie-shaped piece of property. And, um, actually, the actual amount that we touch the property is a small amount. But from where I'm seeing the call box is now, it's, I'm not only not gonna be, I'm only, not only gonna be able to hear it, I'm probably gonna see it because our property is raised up higher than the surrounding houses around me. And, uh, from my kitchen, dining room, living room, and bedroom, and on my deck, I will be able to see it. I will be able to see whatever I can see now as the cars going on Hall Road. And I'm sure that the sound is not gonna stop at six feet. I mean, can you tell me that? Can, can anyone tell us what, what is better, the three hundred feet or this wall? I can see over the wall. Is the sound gonna stop? We're gonna hear corridors slamming. We're gonna hear the gas station. We hear sirens. We hear ambulances all the time. It's a noisy, noisy counter. They cut, when they came into the, the property, they couldn't get through there because the vegetation was so thick and the trees at the time because it has been vacant for so long. And, um, we can hear people talking at the red light when their windows are open. It's a noisy, noisy place. This is a shock to us, that the changing of this. I came here to talk about safety issues, about their entrances that are close to the entrances of our subdivision. I don't know that you know that we have three entrances to our subdivision. The traffic there is horrendous. Do I have time to read you what I wrote? I was just gonna write a statement for you, the board.
Uh, generally, we, we don't give you extra time, I will say that we're, we're not really taking any comments tonight with regards to the site plan, so, the, the, just briefly, we don't generally...
I wanna tell you that our, our subdivision is already dangerous, that is another big issue, it is used as a thoroughfare for all the traffic that is generated.
And, and ma'am, what I, all I would add, and I'll make sure you have your time here, there's, there's different stages that we go through for these types of plans, and if this goes forward, there is a different stage that would refer to the site layout, the general site layout, how driveways are going, and other things like that. Tonight, uh, we're looking at two things specifically, we're looking at the call box distance to the property line, and we're looking to see whether they can come closer to Hall Road, so, so on this drawing, you see at the bottom of their parking lot, there's a grayed-out area, that grayed-out area goes within the normal setback, so those are the two items that we're talking about tonight.
Okay, I understand that, but it's just that I was prepared for something else, and then this was thrown out.
And I understand, I just wanna make sure that you're aware that there still is, that if the project moves forward, there will be other chances to talk about those, um, that are specifically for the site plan.
Okay. I, can I ask two questions? Is this gonna be decided?
Let me just mention that you can ask questions, generally, we take them till the end, and then we try to answer questions we think are, are pertinent, some of them end up falling outside of what we're looking at tonight, so go ahead and ask, ask the questions, and we'll write 'em down and take them again.
It's very simple, I just wanna know if this will be decided tonight.
I, I don't know. Typically, typically, we take a vote, but there may be a tabling, there may be any other things, but by the end of the night, you will know where we stand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll try to make this real short, my name is Don Conkle, I live at four-five-three-eight-zero Abington Circle, and my property is not affected by this actual plan. Most of what I have here is things that are safety-oriented, so I don't know if it's the place to read this, with, at this variance meeting.
I would say if you're not sure you're able to read it, well, if, if we feel it's not pertinent to it, we'll, we'll leave it being, generally, if it's to the general flow of the site and not to the call box of the parking lot extending, it, it's not pertinent to tonight.
Okay.
But I'll leave your judgment on whether you think you should read it.
Well, most of this has to do with the impact to the neighborhood, because the neighborhood was not even aware, except for the people that border these houses.
And...
And if they hadn't have told us, we wouldn't have known anything was going on in that corner. And just as, as a, a side note, can I turn this into you, or?
Uh, you can certainly give it to us, actually, if you could give it, if, if it's your comments, if you can give them to Mr. Aloya, uh, there, he can, uh, give them to us after the meeting.
Perfect.
And, and as I mentioned to the lady before, uh, if this moves forward in the process, there will be further meetings, uh, there'll be, there'll be planning commission meetings, I will note that we advertise to within three-hundred feet of the parcel, which is why you would not have gotten a notice, so you still may want to talk to your neighbors, uh, to make sure that you're aware of when those meetings, but...
Well, correct.
But there are further meetings that you'd be able to...
Because just the traffic flow alone is going to be an impact to the neighborhood, it already is. This morning, there was three accidents on ninety-four, and you would not believe how much traffic came through the neighborhood. From Hall Road all the way to Twenty-One Mile was a parking lot.
Understood.
It's an issue that nobody wants to deal with.
Good evening, my name is Norma Markwood, and I live at four-five-three-two-five Abington Circle, and my husband and I moved to Abington in nineteen-sixty-nine, and as you can imagine, we've seen a dynamic change in Macomb Township and the surrounding area. The most of our concern is traffic. We know that the Macomb County Sheriff patrols the township. I have with me copies of last year's accidents report just at the intersection of Hall Road and Grashit. There have been twenty-one property damage accidents, six personal injury accidents, and two property damages hit and run. Now, uh, due to the, where we're located at, it borders three townships, Macomb Township, Chesterfield, and Clinton Township, so I am going to, uh, proceed with getting traffic reports from Clinton and Chesterfield Township, and, um, as far as the variance of the twenty feet on Hall Road, I think we should be, it should be carefully reviewed, because it's a very, very dangerous area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I, here's copies of the, the police reports.
Anyone else?
Yes, my name's Walter Sutherland, and I live at four-five-three-three-three Abington Circle. Uh, as far as the, the new reduction in square, in the number of feet that are set back to one-seventy-seven now, and as my wife had mentioned, our grade is a little bit higher than most in the area. Being on a crawl space and an extra block, uh, I marked a spot on the pole in the back there, six-foot high, I'll still be able to see a man walking on Grashit and, uh, Hall Road. I can tell you that. Now, as far as the location of that box, uh, seems to put it a little bit closer to my house. Now, all of the houses along that area are less than, uh, the three-hundred feet required. Now, I know that they've came and said that the decibel level will drop right down, but, uh, I wonder who's gonna be operating that volume control and when? Is it gonna be automatic? Are we asking somebody that's making twelve dollars an hour to, to use this and make it function correctly? Especially maybe at seven o'clock in the morning, or somewhere along those lines? I don't know, there's a reason for the three-hundred feet, and I don't see any reason why we should not, uh, should not uphold that. Also, the question you should ask yourself is, do we really need three gas stations on one corner? That's up to you, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Phil Ziole, I live at two-four-two-zero-four Darwin. Uh, they're talking about ambient noise, have you ever been in that area and hear the sirens, the semis, the motorcycles, and they're saying it's gonna be the same as those? Those are pretty loud. They're talking about putting up trees. How big are they gonna be when they plant 'em? They're gonna cut down twenty years of vegetation to plant new trees in and say, and are telling me it's gonna be quieter than what we have now? Explain that to me. I don't, like the other guy says, why do we need another gas station on that corner? They keep on saying a call box, a call box for what? A McDonald's? Starbucks? Nobody's told me why there has to be a gas station there, what the other buildings are gonna be. Am I gonna hear car doors slamming all, all hours of the night? Like they said, you can hear Russ Milney's intercom when you're outside in the spring and summer. What is that gonna do right there on that corner? You ever been on that corner when fifty Harleys come out of the Harley dealership and head up Hall Road? You don't think that's noise? And their ambient noise is gonna be the same as those Harleys? Nah, they're blowing smoke.
Good evening, sir, Nicholas Viviano, four-nine-two-nine-four High Lake Court. On behalf of the BD Lee Incorporated family, uh, we own the Seven-Eleven across the street at, on the northeast corner of Hall Road and Grashit. Uh, when we signed our franchise agreement and purchased the property twenty-four years ago, uh, we were advised that, uh, the area in question was zoned originally not to allow for a competing C-store or gas station. Uh, I thought, I'd like to know if that ordinance has been changed and if that is now allowed. Uh, I know, I know my concerns are more of a zoning, uh, concern, because our business has complied with all of the rules and regulations of the township, exceeding the three-hundred-foot setback from Grashit and Hall Road when we developed and did the site plan. Uh, I'd like to know, uh, what the hardship would be for, or the description for the variance, if there is a hardship brought before the new, uh, contractors, and, uh, why the township would allow the design of a C-store or gas station on a restricted property that may be too small to accommodate such a large building. My concern is the setbacks and the safety as a business owner directly across the street, because from the plot plan, it appears that the driveways might be in direct alignment with one another, uh, that concerns me. Uh, and does the structural design or layout of the building not conform to the property's required setbacks as described by the township? Um, uh, as I said, we've complied with all of the setbacks, and to the board, we've, we've had no violations, and, uh, with the township in twenty-four years of, of faithful and honorable business in the, in the township. I don't have much more, other than, uh, if, if there is a hardship presented, uh, is the township required to discuss the standards, or the seven general standards, which would require the description of the hardship to allow this variance? But if, if I could get, uh, further clarification on the C-store area, if this, if this was changed for rezoning, I, I would, I would welcome that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is David Harms, I live at two-four-two-four-zero Darwin. Unfortunately, my house is right there in the middle, that's my backyard button right up to that. I'm worried about the noise, worried about the pollution, and like everybody else said, we have three gas stations, or two gas stations on that intersection, not the corner, the intersection right now, I see no need for another one. I'm afraid the property value's gonna drop, I mean, I don't see no reason for these variants. And, that's about it, I oppose this.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dennis Fisher, uh, I live at two-four-two-two-two Darwin Street, and, uh, pretty much for the same reasons, uh, the, the light, pollution, the noise, and, uh, like someone saw, they all said earlier, that like four AM in the morning, there's gonna be a dumpster slamming on the ground, and, uh, it's just, and, and it's not needed, everyone knows that, and there's so many gas stations around everywhere, uh, along with drive-throughs and restaurants, it's, and, uh, you're going into, um, residential area, and it's gonna affect every one of us in that, in that whole corner, and you're putting a big cement wall there, and it just, everyone knows that it's, it's not, um, needed, and it just, it's not gonna, you know, I mean, just the cars going through with the loud exhaust, even in a drive-through, it's gonna be horrible, horrible, and no wall's gonna take care of that, and it's just, it's just gonna, you're gonna try and turn at every typical corner, and, uh, in this, in the township, and it's, you know, it's just gonna be annoying for everybody. Thanks, and I oppose it.
Thank you. Seeing none, and without any further discussion from the board, I'm going to close the public comment, uh, and bring it back to the board. Uh, Mr. Box, we had a, a number of, uh, questions brought up, some of them I think are more site plan-related, um, but, uh, I have a few, but can you, can you answer any that you had highlighted that you wanted to bring up?
Yeah, I think the biggest one that was mentioned, uh, multiple times was zoning, so, um, a- as I mentioned in an earlier slide, uh, that this is, uh, has three different zonings, and I think the, these gentlemen mentioned, this is a parcel that is a remnant of different pieces of MDOT right-of-way that have been combined together over the years. Uh, because of that, it does have three different zoning categories on this, it has R1, C1, and C2, all on the same property, different pieces within the property. Uh, we do not like split-zone properties like that, so, uh, these are the type of properties we would like to see get rezoned, and they do in fact have an application in right now to rezone the entire thing to C2, which right now, only part of it is C2.
Um, and I guess just a follow-up question on that, and so you said it's one parcel with multiple zonings, within the parcel or multiple parcels?
Multiple zonings within one parcel.
So, po- potentially, not a, a needed question, but do we know what the zoning is for the area that they're actually requesting the, the call box on?
I don't have that in front of me, no.
Okay. And then, I guess just a question on my part, with the order, why, why do we want to do the variance before the rezoning? Is there, is there a specific reason, or are we just, what's, what's the process?
Right, so, w- we do not have any rules that say you have to do one before the other, they could have come in with rezoning first, they could have come in with the variance first. Um, uh, so, one thing we do typically tell people, though, with the variance, if, if you'd like to go that route first, if you have a certain item you would like to build on a property, and you know what it, it would look like, and it's gonna need a variance, you might wanna go down that road first, because if, if the variance is not granted, it will save you the effort of going down the other avenues.
Okay, anything else that you had that you wanted to...
No, I think that was it.
Okay. Um, one thing I did just wanna mention, uh, there was, oh, uh, some conversation about how the site flows, as I mentioned, it's not typically what we're looking at tonight, it's not pursuant to the question we have, so, the noise of dumpsters, uh, generally the noise of cars, it's not that it's not a question that should be looked at, but it's not really pertinent to the specific items that we're looking at tonight, so, I understand there's, I understand there's concerns...
Excuse me, sir.
I, I understand there's, there's energy here, but I'm, I'm speaking, everyone's gotten their chance. Um, there's all times and places for this, um, and, and the specific site issues are not ones we're going to address tonight for that reason, it's not what we're looking at. Um, the second thing I wanted to mention is, uh, that we have minimal control over the use within a zoning, once the zoning is, is approved. So, determining the difference between a McDonald's or a Wendy's or, or anything, for the good or for the bad, that's not how a municipal, um, program operates, that the parcel is zoned, and then the allowable uses within the zones are allowed. So, we're not really discussing that tonight either, specifically what we're looking at is the call box and the, and the parking. Um, so that being said, uh, I'm going to bring it back to the board, is there any further questions, uh, or comments from the board?
I just answered the question I was gonna ask about the zoning.
Um, I did have a question for the petitioner, you did mention, and I, I think Ms. Posey mentioned this, and I was thinking it as well, of a, of a time restriction if this was granted. Did you have a specific, uh, time, obviously, we can, if, if we were to approve a variance, we could impose a time limit, but do you have a specific time limit that you've come into this thinking or expecting?
Um, w- we have a similar development on Nineteen and Mound in Sterling Heights, and, um, we had a talk box, um, you know, issue we had to overcome there, too. What we decided to do was very, very similar to this, and then we, we limited the hours of operation on the talk box, I believe it was eight to nine PM. So, if they are concerned about it going past eight PM, we'd be willing, or nine PM, we'd be willing to go seven to eight PM.
Okay. And then, I guess my last, I guess question or, or comment is Mr. Box, and, and I don't know, this may be a dialogue with Mr. Aloya, too, um, if, if I see a practical difficulty here, it's that I don't see how you can have a, a C2 parcel that you can't put a call box on, that, that inherently does not make sense, you cannot use the parcel for what it's needed for. But if the parcel is mixed, if it's partially R1, that practical difficulty doesn't seem to me nearly so, um, so strong, because it's mixed. Obviously, if this was an R1 parcel, um, that practical difficulty wasn't, wouldn't, wouldn't be there. Um, is there any, um, have you thought about potentially, uh, having us table this until after, if, if the, if the rezoning recommendations and, and movement is happening in the near future, I was thinking someone mentioned as early as a week from now, is that something that, that you would have an issue with if we talked about tabling it, or what, what would your thoughts on that be?
Well, you, you certainly could table it, um, it, I don't believe it's next week, I think it's the week after, I, I don't have the date right in front of me. Yes, the sixteenth, I, I think that's not next week, uh, what's today, the fourth, so yeah, it's not next week, two weeks, two weeks. Um, you're, you have every right to table it to, to the next meeting and wait to see what happens at that, you could also... You could also, if, if you're considering approving a variance, condition it on the fact that the zoning is approved, rezoning is approved. And were that rezoning to not be approved, it would then negate the variance.
I also, I also agree with Mr. Box. I think that this variance would be conditioned on the rezoning being approved and the site plan being approved because if the site plan is not approved, then at that point, the call box wouldn't be necessary. So that's typically what we've done. And I think if you did that tonight, it'd be consistent with past practice.
I would, and, and we have done that, I think. I, I have heard from some people, there was some concern when we've had conditioned variances upon other actions. Are we okay doing that? Are, are both of you fine with us conditioning? I mean, obviously you just said you were, but I'm, I'm underlining it, making sure you guys are okay with it.
Yes, I don't think this is a complicated condition. I think it depends on what the condition is when the concerns are raised. But this is a logical condition that is, if the site plan and the rezoning doesn't happen, then there's no need for the variance. So it's, it's, it seems to be connected. It's not an irrational one, I guess is what I'm saying.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board?
Couple maybe. The petitioner spoke about Dairy Queen, Wendy's and a couple of the properties along Hall Road. I know Josh, you probably weren't here for those variance requests. Do you have any history on those? Obviously, I mean, we do reference that the vast majority of C two or, or properties within the township don't meet the, meet this three hundred foot ordinance. So this is why we get these variances in front of us.
Correct.
Do we have any information on those ones that specifically were mentioned by the petitioner?
So again, I was not here then. I don't know Jim, if you would know the answer to those. But definitely the Wendy's call box would be within three hundred feet. I'm assuming that they were granted a variance at some point.
Doesn't Dairy Queen under CJ?
Dairy Queen is a consent judgment. So that's a totally different argument. The Wendy's I don't believe is. I would assume that if, if it is within three hundred feet, which I'm pretty sure it is, that they would have been granted a variance. Similar to this situation, they do have, you know, the, the call box angled a certain way. I think they're trying to minimize impacts. And they, they also have a masonry wall. I don't believe there is the vegetative buffer that these gentlemen are suggesting here.
So that, again, with the three hundred foot ordinance. In the ordinance, is the intended ordinance just a straight distance saying that, hey, this is loud, we want to be three hundred feet away? Does it take in these decimals and maybe, when was it, when was the original ordinance written? I mean, now there's obviously technology that they're bringing in and saying that it's going to be fifteen decibels above the ambient sound in the area at any given time. I mean, obviously there's a lot more technology and data that we need to look at than just the distance.
Sure. The, I don't know when that ordinance was written. Well before I was here. I, I think the, the spirit is the distance represents keeping the noise away. I think that the spirit of that ordinance is noise. With regards to technology, I'm not a sound engineer. I don't know, I, you know, I'm not going to sit here and claim that I know how all of that stuff works. They did provide some, some documents that kind of explain how some of that works. But I, I couldn't tell you how the technology for sure will impact it. That, that's not my area of expertise.
And not to put you in the spot even more. Has there, has there been any discussion? I know we talk a lot about zoning ordinance changes and things. Has there been any talk about changing this particular ordinance?
Not this one. Obviously, as it was mentioned earlier, we are, we did have a zoning audit. We have a number of ordinances that have conflicts with other ordinances that we're working on updating. Pretty large overhaul in general of the zoning ordinance I think is going to be undertaken in the near future. This is not one in particular that we have identified as of yet that needs to be looked at.
Any other questions? I actually had one more that I'd forgotten about. Actually, this probably is again to Mr. Box. I believe in our earlier documentation, you had indicated, or I'm not sure if it was you or Melissa, I don't remember, that perhaps there was more sound deadening that could be done. That was on an earlier plan. What's your feeling on this one? Do you feel that they've?
So you're right. They did the, the initial plan that, that you first received in your packet. This, the call box was one hundred and thirteen feet from the residential property line. They did today submit the one you see on your screen now, which is one hundred thirty-three feet away. So they did move it twenty feet further away. They did angle it and they did provide some more vegetative buffer that, you know, I, I'm, I, how much that will deaden the, the noise? Again, I'm not an expert on that. I'm sure it will help deaden the noise, but I don't know how much.
If we were to move forward with this, would you have any objections to us saying something in there with regards to, to your department or, or maybe you and Mr. Van Tiflin approving some type of, or approving the landscaping, what, what they put in there? Because obviously they're showing us, they're showing us a top-down. I don't know if that would be, actually, it might be a site plan thing.
Yeah, it would be a site plan.
It would be a site plan thing. But probably putting in that language, that would be, to be sufficient. And you're okay with leaving that as subjective if we were to move forward, that that would be, you'd have to show drawings in, in a planning commission site plan and try to detail that out.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll provide color renderings, the whole thing. Complete landscaping plan, architectural landscaping plan.
All right. And I'll leave it open for any comments if anybody else has one. I would just mention before we go to any motions that I generally find the, the location of the parcel and the fact that it cannot hold a call box if it was C two to be the practical difficulty for the call box. I, I, I think that having a, a parcel at the corner of Grashet and Hall Road zone commercial and not able to maintain a call box, I think is a practical difficulty for the parcel, assuming that the parcel is C two. With regards to the other one, I think that as Mr. Box has indicated, seems to be safer for the site to project closer to Hall, or to Hall Road. And I don't believe that it really interferes with anybody at that point. And if we can make the site safer by varying there, I think that it's worthwhile doing. I do have concerns about the order of this. I'm not sure what the board wants to do. I know that I would feel more solid in my reasoning here if this parcel was C two. I'm not sure that just doing it as a conditional is, is something that makes me happy. But I will leave that to the board to make motions and we can see what comes of it. So any other questions from the board or comments?
Maybe one more comment for myself. You mentioned a, a similar development nineteen and mound.
And, and Mr. DeCosta, just one second. Mr. Mr. Parkinson, comments are closed, so.
Well, I'd like to rebut because you made a comment.
I'm not taking any more comments right now. Please sit down.
So you mentioned you have a development at nineteen and mound. Does it have the same technology that you're proposing here with the call box and the, the value adjustable sound and things?
Yes, it does. It's specific to being bordering a residential development. We're in the same situation there as we are here.
Okay. My certain, my intent is not to create more work. Is there any way, seeing that it's the same technology, seeing we're not, is there any way we can get some sort of sound study done on that?
That is what we submitted. The company that we're actually going to get the unit from is the documentation or data that we submitted to you guys.
But, and the only reason I bring that up is because I was, this is from the manufacturer, which I'm not.
They, they supply ninety, they're, they're supplier for nine percent of Canada and the US. So their technology is the best. They have, the, the digital function, they have the filters on it. They work with Starbucks to, so you don't hear the blender, you, and then from, from the outside. And then from the inside, you can't hear the car. So they have this filter technology which allows you to reduce the decibel level. So we feel comfortable instead of having these hundred and ten plus decibel level speaker boxes saying, we're going to max at eighty-five.
And, and I'm, and I'm not necessarily questioning what you're saying. But you're providing me what the manufacturer is telling you. And, and that's fine because that's the information you have. Do you have anything of your other sites that would show any type of decimal reading to ensure the, the public and the, and the people that live right next door that yes, it will be below fifty decibels sixty-four feet away or whatever, whatever the manufacturer is claiming?
Short answer, no. We, we don't have that. For us to get a decibel study on a specific unit, it would take a lot of time and more or less we were looking at the amount of vegetation and how that's cutting down the decibel level. Every talk box that is installed has a certain decibel level, right? And it, it is what it is depending on what the user wants to use it for and the location. More or less what we were saying was the talk box is this decibel level. We're not just installing it without installing any other countermeasures in regards to deadening that noise. We're actually installing four to five layers of count, you know, vegetation in order to deaden that noise. And we're willing to go beyond that and address some of the issues that the residents have. If they're concerned about looking into the development, we can certainly take the wall and put twenty-foot pines there. If they're concerned about the noise in the winter time, we can put pines in and deciduous trees that will deaden that noise as well, so that it's just not a straight shot into their backyard. We're really trying to put our best foot forward in order to make them happy. Like I said in the beginning, we're trying to make this a win-win for everybody.
That was actually a question I asked him too. Can you provide me like a decibel level plan similar to like a photometric plan? And them as the.
The experts.
If you can, sorry, if you can turn.
In the industry, that's not some, not something they do or something that can be provided. So it would be like an actual study, you know, significant effort, so.
And Mr. DeCosta, if I can just ask one question that's in the middle there, I think one of the residents mentioned that. I think you touched on this, but the adjustable sound, is that manual? Is that automatic? Is that based on a sensor? Can you detail that a little bit?
It's a combination. It's a combination. So we want to, what we're proposing is max at eighty-five. And then there's the automated volume control that can reduce it. But then there's also levels that you can dial, you know, from twenty to, to I believe one, to also adjust that. But we, we talked about is writing into the lease agreement that that decibel level is max at eighty-five.
And generally speaking, it's automated with a manual override that could be used.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, you, you also have to understand in, in this talk box, when you pull up to it, it's like a digital talk box that you see at any Starbucks. It's, it's not that it's ten feet away from you and people are screaming out of it so that, you know, they, everybody can hear. You're literally two feet from it and you're not yelling into it because the, the way that the technology is now is when they speak out of it, you can hear them, right? It used to be you'd pull up, you couldn't hear anybody and you'd scream into it and yeah, they were very loud. But with the new technology, I mean, that's, that's what these things do. People talk into them. When it comes through the speaker into the place of business, it's actually, the sound is deadened. It's the same thing when it comes out. They're not looking to, you know, put decibel levels out past the person. It's actually the customer, right? They're not looking to talk to somebody that's on the other side of the building. They're only looking to, you know, let that sound out two, three feet max.
They're looking at customer experience. The level of that quality is what's going to improve that customer's experience and then also the turnover time. You're not sitting there and having redundancy in the order that it's able to prove that. So that's where the technology is going to improve that in being able to reduce that decibel level down.
Understood. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. DeCosta.
Now, I mean, that was my, I mean, I, to me, the, the data suggests that it meets the intent of maybe a three hundred foot. I, I'm certainly not, like Mr. Box said, a sound engineer or anything. I, I'm not exactly sure what vegetation we should put in. Do we make that a condition that it's approved by the administrative staff? Maybe that's what we do. I, I don't know. I mean, I don't.
I think, I think it would be as part of the site plan.
Okay. So the planning commission would ultimately decide that at a later date.
I mean, I think we, I think we're within our leeway to require something.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
But I think that, that might be.
What that is. I'm just not sure.
Yeah. All right. If there is no further questions or comments, I would entertain a motion. And again, two variance requests. We should make sure that this is two motions regardless of the way the board wants to take this. And remember that the various things we were talking about was either conditional upon a C two zoning or tabling it in lieu of it. The potential of restriction of hours and then also the landscaping being reviewed by some future board to verify that what they're proposing is actually valid. Any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to table the request to reduce the required three hundred foot setback to one hundred and thirteen foot setback to, for a drive-through window call box to revisit after it's, there's approval or denial of the C two zoning.
Motion by Ms. Posey, is there support?
I'll support that.
Supported by Mr. Piper. I'm going to call the roll on this. Ms. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. DeCosta?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker Field votes yes. That motion passes. Did you, sorry, did you put it, oh, you just said until after it was.
Revisited.
Revisited. Okay. Is that it? I should have asked before I called the motion. Is that enough description, Mr. Box, to be able to know when you're bringing it back?
Yeah.
Be back on the next meeting, correct?
I'll defer to Mr. Aloya if it's too late to, to add a date to that. It's typically easier to add a date. All the, all the general, the, the folks in the room can hear a date. They know when to come back to discuss this again. If, if a date is not put on there.
That's nebulous.
We, we do have to advertise again. But again, as many of these people mentioned, they live more than three hundred feet away. They may not know and they want to be here.
Is that going to be on the agenda for the sixteenth or seventeenth?
The rezoning is on the sixteenth planning commission agenda.
So this could be preceding that.
So this could be.
So if, if we looked at on the sixteenth at planning commission, be a recommendation, one way or the other, the board would then see it twenty-fourth, whatever, whatever meeting they have that week, that'd be the week of Thanksgiving. Are you on? Do you have one the week of Thanksgiving?
I think it's the twenty-third that week.
Yeah, it's earlier.
Do we have a ZBA in December? I know you told me that.
As of now, we do not. But if you, obviously if you table something with that date on it, we would.
I will leave it up to you because it was your motion. I think we can amend the motion and revote on it if you would like.
Yeah, I can amend the motion to include the, is it November sixteenth? Just to be clear.
Well, November sixteenth is when their rezoning hearing. What we're looking for is a date for, you're tabling this to, are you tabling this to the December ZBA meeting, which?
Is the second?
Is it, I believe the second.
We do have a special meeting that week, but it would be for, be before the board had seen it.
Correct.
Which I would think we'd want to go after the board.
Yeah. So till December, I'll amend the motion to December second.
I will support that amendment.
Mr. Aloya, should we revote on that or is? Okay. All right. I'll call the roll on that then. Ms. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. DeCosta?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker Field votes yes. All right. That is the first item. And obviously I think you're following what we're, we're, we're talking through and, and if you have any questions, I'm sure Mr. Box can answer them once the meeting is, is done with that regard. Hopefully understand what we're, what we're trying to make sure of here.
I, I have a question. Are you guys, you guys are tabling both variances, the candidacy or just the talk box?
This motion was only for one, so we haven't.
Okay, okay, thank you.
We potentially could, but we haven't taken.
No, I just, I just wasn't sure how you guys.
Understood. Any motions on the second variance request that will be with regards to the setback along Hall Road? Hearing none, I guess I will make the motion. I would make a motion to grant the variance from section ten point one six zero five D one. That'll be with regards to reducing the required setback for permanent parcel zero eight, three six, four five, two, zero, 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 two, two. This would be per the dimensions given and requested. And this would be based on the recommendations from our department heads that the safety of the site would be increased by this very, this variation and that it should not affect any of the neighboring parcels.
I will support that as well.
A motion by Tucker Field, supported by Mr. Piper. I'm going to call the roll. Mr. Tucker Field votes yes. Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. DeCosta?
Yes.
Ms. Posey?
Yes.
That motion passes. So to summarize for people, I think one, one of our residents wanted to know if they'd know where we stand. Two variances tonight. One of them is tabled to the December second meeting, pardon me. And that was based on Ms. Posey's motion. And that was with regards to the call box. So that item will be back on our agenda on that day. Sometimes further tablings can happen, so I would not guarantee we'll talk about it, but that would be the expectation at this time. And then the other variance with regards to the setback on Hall Road has been approved. At this point, there are no further steps for that variance. So that has been approved and, and it would be, it would exist. That being said, we're moving on to the next item. Thank you, gentlemen, which is.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Which is item nine, public comments. These are public comments. And we do have a four-minute time limit. Mr. Parkinson, you have been up here, but if you could just state your name and address.
Yes, John Parkinson, two four, two six, one Darwin Street. First, I'd like to thank you for tabling the variance that would deeply affect my property. The second thing is I want to bring to your attention that earlier you said we weren't discussing the sound around. We were only discussing the squawk box, right? So talking decibel rates is disgusting the sound. I know that you've take, that you closed and tabled it. I just want this to be on the record that you have been talking about sound in this area. that you have been talking about sound in this area for the whole time, and that this will, there are no guarantees that when you put a call box in, A, you open at 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock, 8 o'clock, whatever time you open. I don't wake up that early. My wife doesn't wake up that early. And the other thing is, you can't control the vehicles that are in that drive-through. I want you guys to highly consider that when this comes. I will also like to mention that we will be back for the zoning, rezoning hearing, and we will oppose that as well. Thank you.
And one just comment while this gentleman's coming up. I would mention that, you're correct, that sound issues do have to be paid attention to. I would just mention that perimeter sound issues, such as the dumpsters and other things that are not directly related to that item, are things that we would not take into consideration.
Okay, Phil Ziole, 24204 Darwin.
Yep.
They said they're going to plant trees. They mentioned 24-foot tall trees. So, they are, does that mean when they plant that tree, it's going to be 24 feet tall? Or are they going to plant a 5-footer and wait for it to get 24 feet tall? They said they were going to plant 24-foot tall trees.
Anyone else? Hearing no other comments, just to fill, just one question I had mentioned for you, sir.
Bill?
I think it's here in me. Just want, we're done with the public comments, but I just wanted to respond, and that we did not approve any landscaping this evening.
Okay.
We, and it's not a public.
They just mentioned 24-foot tall trees.
Sir, it's not a public comment time, so I'm responding. We didn't address landscaping this evening, but what we did talk about is if this was to move forward, that that would go to the site plan. And with a site plan, they have to submit drawings of what type of plantings they want, how tall they are, how far their spacing. And the reason we discussed putting it at that stage is that's typically where landscaping requirements would be addressed with people who typically look at those types of things. So, I understand your concern. What someone says at one point can magically appear as something else and another, and that is the type of thing that we do get down on paper, on a drawing, spelled out. So, I'm not saying it'll be what you would want it to be, but I understand your concern about making sure it's specified, and that is something we would do.
Like I said, that's what they said.
And understood. All right. Let's move on to item 10, which is ZBA member comments. Any comments from the board?
I do have one. First off, sorry, we have a December meeting. I think Josh tried to get out of it. With regards to the last item, initially, I tend to, would tend to think I would approve the variance, but I was wondering, is, can you possibly bring back some information with regards, I know there's a lot of talk back and forth, especially with approving other variances on other restaurants and things. I tend to agree with the chairman that this site would, in no place would it allow a talk box because of the size and irregular shape. So, if you could bring back some information with some of the other variants that were referenced, I would appreciate it to help us out.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Hearing none, I will move on to the planning director comments. Mr. Box, anything tonight?
I have no further comments this evening.
All right. Very good. Then, the next item is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Posey, supported by Mr. Piper, to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, and at 8:23, we stand adjourned.